Good evening, everyone. Welcome to Brandywine School District Board of Education Regular Meeting. Tonight is Monday, January 8th, 2024. Happy New Year. Before we get started and call to order, just want to say thank you to Mackay Boone and his accompanists for the smooth jazz we had this evening. A round of applause. And with that, we will call the meeting to order. Ms. Harris, may I please have a roll call?
Mr. Scrobat.
Here.
Ms. Pigeon.
Here.
Mr. Ackerman.
Present.
Mr. Heller.
Here.
Ms. Stock.
Here.
Dr. Jaggeden.
Here.
Reverend Dickerson. Six present. We have a corn.
Thank you very much. At this time, I'd like to ask Ms. Pigeon to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the land of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time, I will entertain a motion to approve this evening's agenda.
So moved. Second.
Have a motion, Ms. Pigeon, second, Ms. Stock. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And that will roll us right into our High School Reporter Special Presentations. Tonight, we are starting with Mount Pleasant High School, Michael Payne and Osman Beg. Read.
Testing. Okay, much better. Yeah. Hello, my name is Michael Payne and I'm the Student Council President for Mount Pleasant High School and I'm here with...
Osman Beg, the Student Council Vice President at Mount Pleasant High School.
And we've had a few things happen in this past month that we found pretty remarkable. So we brought a lot of holiday cheer to our school from The Grinchness Tree, which are two of our most spirited seniors, Madison and Lawrence. They are very happy people and they brought some amazing costumes to school on the last day before break. And we thought it was an amazing highlight of our school's culture. We also had a lot of staff members dress up for our Holiday Festivity Spirit Week during that last week before winter break. And we thought that was important to bring some sort of cheer when everyone can sometimes feel like it's dragging on before we're finally free. And then we even had holiday carolers that brought some amazing energy throughout the halls and brought a variety of songs that gave a lot of spirit. And we even had our GSA, or Genders and Sexualities Alliance, joint meeting between Concord, Mount, and Brandywine at our school. Unfortunately, the members of that club were having so much fun that they forgot to take pictures. But it was a blast and it was amazing to have our second annual joint meeting and sort of bring those clubs together for their initiative and work together to create a community.
Next slide. Some of the other events I've had in Mount Pleasant over the past few months include our long awaited Senior Slumber Party Movie Night, an event where seniors got together and were able to spend time with their friends after school between 7:00 PM and 11:00 PM the Thursday before winter break started. It was very fun. It was very entertaining for everyone involved. Getting good, any opportunity to go to school with all their friends in their pajamas after school in the late PM hours. It was incredible feeling and incredible atmosphere. There's a lot of holiday joy, holiday festivities. As you can see, I think in that picture right there, watching Home Alone is very fun. And I really enjoyed my time there. And another event we had was our NPHS Pause for People. So something Mount Pleasant prides itself on is a mental health awareness and raising the importance of keeping your mental health good. And although the holiday season is very enjoyable for many, it does come with a lot of some stress for many students involved with the tests and the exams that occur at this time of the year. And one of the ways that Mount Pleasant wanted to alleviate this was to host Pause for People, an organization who enjoys going around to different places and promoting therapy with pet interaction for everyone involved. Our students loved the opportunity to get to play with these furry animals during school. And it is incredible seeing just how a few minutes interacting with pets can uplift anyone's mood and raising awareness of how important it is to make sure your mental health is good. It was very fun at that event, too.
And finally, we have a lot of upcoming events, too many to really keep track of with our many organizations, such as the Avid School Showcase, which started today, actually. We had many guests come through the school and sort of tour our school to see what an example of a school in the Avid program should look like, which I was very flattered about because I don't always realize how amazing the programs at my school are. But the Avid program was a great example for the entire school district, per se. And we loved having them come in and just see what our school is all about. We also have the Blue Gold 5K event coming up, wherein the Blue Gold program is going to work towards including the Special Needs Program in a sort of marathon to raise money and bring more funds into the program. We also have a winter dance in the works that's looking to be on February 10th and it is going to be themed Love Around the World. However, we even wanted to make this even more inclusive, going back to the Blue Gold program. And because not everybody wants to have a grand old time dancing around to blaring music in a gymnasium the entire dance. So we are hoping to have tables from a variety of our clubs, such as the Black Student Union, the Genders and Sexualities Alliance, Girls Empowered, and many other diverse aspects to sort of have different activities, such as coloring and other fun events where people are actually able to talk over the music. And we are also continuing our work with the Upper Learning Program to empower student voice. There is going to be a mental health assembly that is a part of that, who Chaney Yates, our student body president for the senior class at Mount Pleasant High School, has begun to organize. And there are going to be representatives from Christiana Care and other amazing resources that goes back to Mount Pleasant High School's initiative to work towards a better mental health climate for our school. So thank you so much for listening.
Anyone have any questions? No? Okay, thank you.
Questions from the board? Appreciate all the school spirit and everything you guys have done and appreciate the bullet points of the upcoming events. So thank you very much. Next up, we have Brandywine High School's Lola Fanning and Katie Grant.
Hello, everyone. Good evening, board members and audience members. My name is Lola Fanning and I am the Student Council President here at Brandywine.
My name is Katie Grant and I'm the Vice President here at Brandywine. Brandywine has had a fantastic start of the winter season regarding athletics. I'm very proud because he's my teammate. Jackson Bloome from the swim team was picked as the first winter athlete of the season for Delaware. And before winter break, the boys and girls across team went caroling at the local senior home. And they didn't get many photos, but from Snapchat, it looks like they had a lot of fun. So that's cool. And then lastly, the boys' basketball team won their tournament at Wildwood Beach last weekend.
Okay, so Brandywine's College and Career Center has been doing some amazing things. Our hashtag, I decided, is a hashtag that the College and Career Center created. And it basically just highlights students who have committed to college and what their plans are and how amazing they are, basically. And the newest additions are Malte John and Rachel Bachroth. Malte will be attending Stanford and Rachel Bachroth has committed to swim for the Ohio State University and we are so, so proud of them. Okay, there will be an upcoming FASPA workshop on January 16th and 17th for students. And it basically just invites their parents and them to have in-person help for the FASPA workshop, since it can be difficult, especially with the changes this year. So moving on to our alumni college and career fair, unfortunately, they had so much fun, they did not send us any pictures. However, how it looked during lunch, it was so, so fun. And they had a lot of alumni, so people got to see their friends that graduated. And also, they got to ask questions, which was great, because it was not people that already graduated college. It was people that are experiencing college right now. So it was an amazing experience. And then moving on to sports, the football team has partnered with Philadelphia Eagles. The leveling the field organization collects used cleats to give to people who cannot afford them, because everyone deserves accessibility to athletics. Finally, during lunch, we have been collecting soda tabs to donate to the Ronald McDonald House. Those tabs go a long way in order to furnish and restock homes offered to families with sick children in the Ronald McDonald House.
For our upcoming celebrations, the Winter Spirit Week and Winter Ball will take place January 16th to the 20th. The Winter Spirit Week theme this year is fairy tales and the classes have already started preparing. Next Wednesday, the Honor Society induction ceremonies will take place. Students will be celebrated for their accomplishments among their various courses and extracurriculars. Next, four students from our engineering department involved in the Samsung solve for tomorrow have created a game designed for special needs children. The four students have advanced to the state finals. Lastly, the MTSS is having their winter incentive at the end of January, which will be a cozy grandma den theme with hot chocolate and games for people with no referrals and good behavior. Okay, that is it. Thank you for your time. Are there any questions, comments, or concerns?
Just a comment around Malte and Rachel's acceptance to Stanford and the Ohio State University. I think we weren't anticipating a clap at that time, but it is definitely clap worthy.
I will say, this is one of my favorite times of year when the I decided comes around and we see all the places students are going, all the jobs they're entering into, military service, and also some outstanding universities. You know, it's great pride as a BS, BSD graduate and a parent and member of the board to see, you know, feel that we've played a part in preparing our students for their next adventure. So thank you for sharing that.
Thank you.
And last but not least, we have Concord High School, Rashil Patel and Katie Frampton.
Good evening, board members and Brandywine School District community members. My name is Rashil Patel and I am Concord High School Student Council President. I'm joined today by my secretary, Elizabeth Garrity. As winter break approached during December, clubs and organizations at Concord were very active in the community. Our Asian American Cultural Association hosted a holiday party with food, karaoke, and more, with over eighty attendees, including staff and students. All of their success was made possible from the hard work and food donations from their members. The students of Interact Club came together and wrote 150 kind holiday cards, which were distributed to local nursing homes, including Shipley Manor, Harbor Chase, and Fordwood Manor. Our Black Student Union held a holiday movie night in our auditorium and students watched Home Alone in their comfy pajamas, which sounds like an amazing experience. The Wilmington Department of Police presented a roads, rules, and rights presentation for all students taking the driver's education class, as you can see in the picture on the bottom right. We, as a student council, have also been very involved. Last month, the week before break, our advisor, Ms. Brody, and Katie and I took a drink card to every staff member at our school and offered them drinks and snacks in appreciation of the great work they do. They love the refreshments, as seen in the picture on the top left. That same week, we also decked the halls with about 700 paper snowflakes with handwritten affirmations on them. You can see one of those snowflakes on the right, on the slide.
Our Concord Cares Initiative is supporting the Be Positive organization this year. Be Positive is a local organization that financially supports children, families of children with cancer. Our boys' basketball game against Odyssey Charter last month was our first ever Be Positive basketball event. From the ticket sales that were kindly donated by the team and the shirts that were sold at the game, we raised over $500 for Be Positive on that day alone. In the top row is a picture from the Holiday Vendor Event that Concord hosted in December, where we also sold $325 worth of Be Positive shirts. All of this is part of Concord Cares efforts to support the Be Positive Foundation. As of now, Concord Cares has sold over 200 shirts since the start of the school year. Special Olympics Delaware sponsors an annual polar bear plunge. Brandywine School District is collecting donations and sending a team of this year's plunge in Lewis, Delaware on February 4th. We'd love for everyone to donate and join our district team. Next slide, please. Pivotating back to our school community, over fifty of our alumni from the 2020 to 2023 graduating classes came back to Concord for an alumni panel hosted by our counseling department. The picture is on the bottom right. Our seniors got to ask the graduated alumni for advice about college and what life after school looks like. Our instrumental and choir concerts were held on December 12th and 14th. Our students exhibited incredible talent to an exceptional turnout of listeners.
We also held a Winter Spirit Week leading up to break that consisted of Mad About Plaid or Flannel Day, Teacher-Student Switch Day, Be Positive Day, and Holiday and Ugly Sweater Day. As you can see in these photos, everyone was very excited to share their holiday cheer, especially our staff who loved wearing sweatpants for a day. Mrs. Career Spanish classes even took a field trip to New York City to watch a play entirely in Spanish and enrich themselves in Spanish culture.
Winter sports are off to an amazing start. Our girls' swim team beat district rival Brandywine on the road. Last week, Mia Philibin won Delaware's Athlete of the Week due to her outstanding performance at the girls' basketball game against Odyssey Charter. Jeremiah Eastburn placed in the top three at the Milford Wrestling Invitational, where fourteen teams from across the state came to compete. The girls' basketball team hosted a cornhole tournament as a fundraiser and thirty-two teams registered to compete. Our new mountain biking club also held its very first interest meeting in December. Next slide, please. Coming up, we are very excited for our Winter Ball on January 19th. After the astounding turnout at this year's homecoming, we expect it to be a fun night that raises money for our junior and senior classes. This event will be dedicated to the Be Positive Foundation as well. We would also like to thank the board for listening and responding to our request of unisex bathrooms. Our Make a Change Club will be meeting to discuss possible accommodations and solutions to aid students.
We have one last thing to say and we want to invite Mount Pleasant's representatives to also join us.
So thank you again for your time and your patience as we present about our schools and everything. So every month, we come up and we tell you about the amazing things that we have going on at our schools. But these things are only possible due to your help in the funding that we get from taxes from you. And we have all of these many events that we are unable to do without that amazing support that we get from our Delaware community. So on February 14th, 13th, excuse me, we are asking the Brandywine School District to come into schools nearby and vote in support of the referendum to allow us to continue operating at our current base level.
Then you on to what Michael said, to be able to maintain the district's top rankings in the state, your vote in the upcoming referendum is needed. If you didn't know, the referendum is a direct vote for citizens that live in district bounds, asking to raise taxes so the district can operate at the high level it currently does right now without cuts. If the referendum does not pass, it will hurt our sports, our extracurriculars, our music programs, our technology, and the maintenance of our buildings. If the referendum does not pass, not the careers of 117 staff members could be endangered. If the referendum does not pass, your child's education will be directly affected.
And I know it's not always easy to come in during the day, you know, and just sort of vote to increase taxes. But we have stretched our budget since 2019. We were expected to have another referendum previously, but unfortunately, but fortunately, we were able to stretch it due to COVID funding and other sorts of extra bits that we were able to use to keep ourselves at this baseline. But we are once again coming out to the community to ask for your support to keep us at our baseline. So this money allows us to operate for the basics and it is taxed off of the value of your house from the 1900s. So please make sure to come out and vote in support.
And to add on to what Michael said, yes, it will raise your property taxes by an average of $15 per month in the first year and $12 per month in the second year. But is there really anything that you would rather pay taxes for than for your child to have a good education? Thank you. Furthermore, investing in our district will boost personal property values and you will get a better price for your home when you eventually sell it. Otherwise, cuts will impact every position, every department, every single school. The school district will drop down in its quality of education without your vote. Think of your students, property, community, and us when you vote. Voting will be held at every BSK school except for Harlan Elementary from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM on February 13th. Anyone who is a resident in our district bounds, a citizen and eighteen years of age or older can vote. Apple Quinamink School District just held a similar referendum and they failed to pass all three clauses. One of those clauses failed to pass by just four votes. So every single vote matters. On February 13th, go out and vote for BSD. Vote for our students. Vote for the staff that work every single day to make this one, this one of the best school districts in Delaware. And vote for your child. Thank you. Any questions or comments?
I say it every month and I'm always impressed by our student leaders, but to come out and make a plea for a referendum speaks a lot to you as a group and student leaders and for not just your peers to look up to, but for the community at large and recognizing the value that the Brandywine School District has provided to you and want that to continue and share that with others. So thank you for taking the initiative to make your joint statement this evening. It's much appreciated and we thank you. That'll lead us into our special presentations and recognition, beginning with MTSS, presented by Dr. Yolanda McKinney and Ms. Cashner.
Good evening, everyone. President Scrobat, Superintendent Holer, members of the board in our in-person and virtual audience. My name is Dr. Yolanda McKinney and I am the Director of Culture and Climate for the district. I'm here tonight with Ms. Sarah Cashner, District MTSS Coordinator and Ms. Sarah Hearn from the Delaware MTSS Technical Assistance Center. Educating the whole child has been a hallmark of the Brandywine School District for many years. Programs such as Positive Behavioral Interventional Supports, otherwise known as PBIS, Instructional Support Teams, IST, and Response to Intervention, RTI, are a few examples of the programs that we have implemented to ensure we are meeting not only the academic needs of children, but the social and emotional needs as well. Multi-tiered Systems of Support, MTSS, provide us with a holistic approach to meeting the needs of our students. We are here tonight to recognize three of our schools for their outstanding work in this area. Ms. Sarah Cashner, District MTSS Coordinator, is going to share some information with you about this three-tiered system approach.
Good evening. We are thrilled to be here to recognize our schools for their efforts around multi-tiered system of support. As you can see, and I feel like I always have to flash up the triangle when I speak about multi-tiered systems of support, all our buildings are hard at work, not just these three, working on these universal supports for tier one, which is all students all the time. And then we are ready and available to service students in a small group intervention when the need arises for academic or non-academic needs. And then there is our tier three intensive individualized intervention that we provide students who are in need of that level of support. Our tier one supports, the green, the universal, includes all those things that Dr. McKinney mentioned, which then allows us to be culturally responsive, equitable for all students, and trauma-informed. So I am thrilled to be here to introduce Sarah Hearn, who is from Delaware's MTSS Technical Assistance Center, formerly known as the PBS Project. If that title isn't familiar, it's just changed over. We're thrilled to have her here to present to our schools their phase recognition.
Good evening, everyone. As a state, there is a commitment to meeting the needs of the whole child through an integrated tiered prevention system that utilizes team-based leadership and database decision-making to meet the academic and non-academic needs of all students. To honor this commitment, the Delaware MTSS Technical Assistance Center is supported by our Delaware Department of Education to provide training and coaching to Delaware educators. Our staff team is housed at the University of Delaware, but you can find us working in districts and schools throughout the state. The work of the Delaware Positive Behavior Support is embedded within our new MTSS TA Center. Through Delaware PBS, we recognize schools for their implementation focus on universal and advanced tiers of support for behavior and social emotional learning. While all schools are engaged in establishing MTSS, schools across the state voluntarily engage in the self-reflective application process. The application guides teams to reflect on the school year's implementation efforts and submit an application focused on plans for growth in the coming year. Applications are reviewed by District MTSS coordinators and by a panel of PBS Project staff. Phases one and two focus on school-wide tier one supports in the areas of social, emotional, and behavioral well-being for all students. Phases three and four focus on targeted tier two, often group-based supports, which entails enhancement and bolstering of tier one practices for students in need of additional supports. In 2023, three Brandywine schools engaged in this reflection and planning process to continue their growth and enhance their MTSS efforts. We are excited to recognize them here with you all tonight. The next slide. First, we'd like to recognize Hamby Elementary School receiving Phase Two recognition for their advanced school-wide PBS implementation efforts.
Hello, I'm Mrs. Zagresti and I am Hamby's principal. And most importantly, I'm here to recognize Ms. Rodriguez as our MTSS Tier One Lead and also our Dean of Students. And I just want to thank her in front of everyone to say thank you so much for always pushing Hamby towards excellence. And I know that you will agree that our students, staff, and families take a big part in ensuring that all of our systems are solidly in place. But it's with your leadership that we're able to do that. So I just want to thank you so much and thank you, everybody, for your recognition.
Our next two schools reflected on both their tier one and tier two efforts and submitted applications accordingly. Next, we'd like to acknowledge Lombardi Elementary for their Phase Two as well as Phase Three award for their tier two problem-solving work.
Good evening, guests. I would like to recognize these two wonderful, amazing educators next to me. First, Emily Mansbit. She is a special ed education teacher in fifth grade. She is also our special ed team leader. And we have Katie Seiko, first grade teacher and first grade team leader. For you all... For, for you all that are in education and working in the buildings, you know how much time and energy goes into MTSS. But if you're not familiar with it, I'll just tell you that there is an unbelievable amount of times that these two wonderful teachers spend during the day, before school, after school, to build the culture in our building. With, with tier-one and, and tier-two and three, I just can't thank them enough. And I just wanted to recognize them in front of everybody because the work that they put in is, makes Lombardi what it is. And it makes our culture, and it makes, as a principle, makes my job easier too, because they're so amazing, and it's, it just makes it easier. So I just want to thank them, and thank you for the, the award and recognition.
And last but not least, we'd like to recognize Carrcroft Elementary has received Phase Two and Phase Four awards. While these three schools are repeat recipients of these awards, this is the eighth year that Carrcroft Elementary is receiving Phase Four.
Hello, I'm Mark Roblin, the Principal of Carrcroft Elementary. I want to introduce the folks to my left. My far left is Mr. Clarence Smith. He's our Assistant Principal at Carrcroft and also a part of our team. And the brains of the operation is Kathy Zimmerman, who is our school psychologist. And she puts in so much effort and work in writing these plans as they go to the state. And so we appreciate them. So thank you very much.
And each of these schools have received certificates noting their phase award as well as a banner, we call it a banner addition, that notes the year and the phase, and they can add those on to a larger banner that we hope they're proudly displaying in their buildings. Thank you.
Thank you. We'd just like to give them one more round of applause. And schools, if you would meet us in the lobby for pictures, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Congratulations to all tonight's recipients. Next up, we have an update on transportation initiatives. Mr. Roberts Cale and Ms. Eubanks.
Hey, everyone. I'm Leon. I'm the Transportation Supervisor here for Brandywine School District. Tonight, we are here to, first, I wanted to say thank you. I want to say thank you to President Scrobot, Mr. Holer, the executive team for having us here tonight. Not often do we get to actually speak to a group of people about transportation. So I'm really happy about this, me and my counterpart, Vicky. We've been talking about this all day, so I hope that this presentation goes great. We're ready. All right. So of course, you know, our district, we have focus areas. And one of the focus areas that we have in transportation that we can help out with is operational excellence. Of course, in Brandywine School District, we transport 7,231 students. That's today. That can change tomorrow. Enrollment changes, sometimes it's less. We walk in and we see 7,100 students. Sometimes we see 7,500 students, and we have to route them students within 48 hours. Of course, I can't do it all by myself. Like I said, my counterpart, Vicky Ebanks, she's a great support. And then as you see on the, and as you see on the screen here, you see, you know, the list of the employees that work inside the office with me, that ensure that we get every student back and forth to school daily, safe. You know, we make sure the buses are running correct, the routes are on time. We've had, yes, we had some glitches in the past, but we're getting through them, working through them. So, you know, I've been in transportation for 15 years, and I want to say I've been with Brandywine School District for seven years, and we have been through some changes. And if you just look 12 years ago, this is exactly what our bus drive looked like. Our mechanics, they worked outside. They could not even fit a school bus inside of their garage. They worked outside in the freezing cold, and they had to get, get tires ready for our buses in the freezing cold, but they did it. If you look to now, this is today. I, I don't have to say anything, speechless. I mean, you can just tell the difference, and this has been within the last three years. You know, as you see, I don't even got to get into it. I can go to the next slide. Thank you. You know, there's a few things that we, that we have implemented, you know, for safety. You know, one of our top priorities is safety in transportation. We implemented a must-be met. So exactly what that is, I can share a personal experience. I have a four-year-old myself, and one of my biggest things was when he was going to go to school, and hey, is he going to get off the bus alone? When I started here back in 2017, there was no actual must-be met where a trusted adult or a trusted individual had to actually pick up the student. So we implemented that. Now, that is for kindergarten, first grade, second grade, all the way up to 12th. But of course, that's up to parents to decide. If you do not want that, just let us a little note, this isn't what I want, and we, we do accept that. However, we do have that. Also, this past school year, we actually implemented kindergarten and first grade meet the bus driver. So this is something, and we're the only district that ever did this. So what we did was, we had our bus drivers run their bus routes, their dry runs. But we allowed, we gave the parents the actual bus stop times, and they were able to meet us at the bus stop, get on the bus, ride the whole bus route, meet the bus driver, go inside the school, get a snack, and then get back on the bus, and then we did the PM route. So, you know, kindergarten, first grade, who's, who's more scared, the, the parents or the kids? And I'll tell you, me having a four-year-old, I'm more scared than the parents. I'm more scared than the kids. So it gave us all a little bit of ease. We hope to keep this going. It was successful this year. We hope to get more, more parents, more families involved next year. There's a lot that goes on in transportation. You know, safety is on number one, and everyone thinks, oh, you just put a tire on a bus to keep it moving, put the red and yellow lights on. But our routing software actually plays a major, a major part within our, within the safe transport of students. So we utilize, we used to utilize, sorry, excuse me, MapNet. Now we utilize Busology. Busology, one of their top priorities is safety and efficiency. You know, now we have it where, now we have it where, when we are routing the bus, not only can we see exactly the bus stops, we even went as far as this last year of actually looking at the crime statistics out in the city and even up in North Wilmington. And we had actually moved our bus stops away from, you know, areas that were high for crime rate. We did that this past school year. We plan to look at it every school year and keep doing that. Of course, you know, along with, we got to make sure our drivers and our attendants and the people that are out there on the road, we got to make sure that they are safe and that they're ready. A way that we do that is with ongoing professional development. Some things that we do, we, I mean, we have to be honest. Most of our bus drivers and bus tenants, they're not going to school to be teachers or scientists or making sure that in, in behavioral, they're not going for that. So some things that we do every school year is we go over student discipline and de-escalation, safety training. We have a lot of special needs training and anti-bullying training, and that's just some. I mean, we have so many different trainings that we go through. I'll be here all night. I would take the whole presentation if I went over. We also, this school year, well, within the past two school years, we initiated geo-tracking. So geo-tracking allows us now to look and see where every bus is in real time. I can tell you the speed of the bus, the direction of the bus, the travel of the bus, when the bus stopped, when the bus opened the door. You know, one of my favorite things is the parent will call, the bus left within 10 seconds. Well, actually, I see it, it sat there for a minute and 30 seconds. So, you know, it helps both of us. It helps the students, it helps us. You know, we have a direct information of exactly what the bus is doing. And that is something that we just implemented this, this past school year. Also on our buses, thanks to, thanks to access funds, we were able to get new cameras installed. About four years ago, four short years ago, if you had asked us to pull a camera, we had about 10 different camera systems on all of our buses. It wasn't the easiest. Now we have brand-new cameras on all of our buses, and they all are the same technique. They're Wi-Fi, so they're easier to pull the video. We have one in the back, one in the middle, one by the front door. Then we also have one that actually faces the step well. So 100% of the bus is covered. We can see everything inside of the bus and even behind the seats. Now the buses have the tall seats, we can see everything. And then we also have a forward-facing camera. That plays a big part because a lot of people don't realize that students cross in front of the bus. We want to see, when we have to cross our students, we try not to. But when we do have to cross our students, we want to be able to see what happened. Did that bus driver cross the student? Did the student make eye contact with the driver? You know, what, we, we want to see the big picture while we're not there. We also have bus tablets on our bus. So the tablets, that was a big thing that we just got in 2022. BSD installed them in all of our buses. They allowed us to, like I said before, track location. It also, it eliminated paper routes. So I don't know if you guys remember, back in the day, you had your bus driver driving around, watching the paper plus 70 students. How is he getting them to school on time and paying attention? Not no more. Now we actually have a tablet system that gives you the turn-by-turn direction, and it's audible, so you can actually hear. So while you're driving, that this, while we're driving, we're driving, watching the students, and getting the route done. Safe. Talk about safety. Just like in a car, you use Waze, use Google, same thing. So also with that, came the Where's the Bus app for, for parents. This is something that we've had for two years now, and a lot of parents that utilize it, they love it. No more waiting outside for 30 minutes for the bus to come. I know now, my, my four-year-old, I stand outside with him in the morning, 20 minutes, 30 minutes, waiting on the bus. Now with Brandywine, if you download this app, you'll know when the bus is coming up to your bus stop. So it eliminates your bus stop time to be at the stop, five minutes. We have a breakdown, shows up on it. Now we're on to our next phase. So I want to say, before I get to this phase, there is a lot of things in transportation, and I would have about 100 slides, slides if I actually said everything that we do. But I want to point out some of the, some of the key points. Now we're on to our next phase, which is going to be the bus scanners on our bus, ID scanners. If you look to the right, ID scanners, they have where you can take your ID badge. All students in Brandywine School District will take the ID badge. They'll swipe their badge, or they can type their number in, and it's going to pop up on the, on the bus driver's tablet. And it's going to say all their information about that student. So it's going to say, Vicky Ebanks, she gets on at 44th and Market. Bus stop time is 7:45. It's going to say, Vicky's a must-be met. It gives all little crucial vital information that we need to make sure that that student gets on and off the bus safe. So this is something that we're rolling out now. Mount Pleasant High School was our pilot school for her. And I have a parent, she calls almost every afternoon, and she's like, Lee, my kid got off the bus at 2:43 today. Thank you, you know? And if he gets off at 2:45, she's calling, it's 2:45, he's not off the bus. But I'm like, hey, he's on the bus, okay? So you know, it really does help us. We're able to keep track of all the buses. So that does end the slideshow for tonight. Of course, I'll come back to give you guys some more another day. Are there any questions? Yes. Hi, Ms. Fidgen. Yes.
Are they, do you have cameras outside of the bus as well?
No, we do not. No cameras outside of the buses. We only have, so I know like another district, they have cameras outside their buses. I mean, the reason for that, they have a lot of, so the state, we, they have a lot of cars that pass on the left or right-hand sides. We actually don't have many of that inside of Brandywine School District because most of our bus stops are door-side. We don't do a lot of crossing.
Thank you.
I, I have a question. I actually had a resident reach out to me by email a couple of weeks ago, and, and this happened on the agenda, and I said I would ask. So they were curious a little bit about what the district is thinking and forward-looking, especially when it comes to all-electric buses. And they pointed to our website, the Electric School Bus Initiative. And I understand the logistics of that are monumental of even thinking about it. It's a many, many, many-year project, but I, I promised I would ask what the district's thought of that. And they were, by the way, talking not so much from an environmental standpoint, from a cost-saving standpoint.
So I can say this, from an environmental and cost-saving, we've already had propane buses. And they're cleaner air and actually are cheaper on fuel. So we actually have changed all our buses from diesel to propane in 2019. So now all we order is propane and air conditioning. So that's actually a plus for the students, keep them all safe as well. I will say this, electric, we are looking into electric. We actually planned, there's actually a grant out now, and we plan to pilot electric in 2025. Nothing has been set and stolen yet, so I don't want to give you exact answers, but I will say we are looking to do that.
Thank you. Mr. Heller, there was actually a news article just today that came out. The federal government had
Approved it.
A grant that was put out. Delaware was not one of the, the states selected for participation in that grant, but they are, are trying to seek other grants or second-round opportunities from that grant to, to bring electric buses into play here in Delaware. And if I, if I could just say, having been around transportation for a while, Leon has been at the helm or second-in-command for about five years. Two years as second-in-command or three, two years as the lead. Vicky has come on board. The changes that that opening slide, the names, all of those initiatives have been accomplished in the last four years. Just one of them is a major, major initiative. And to see all of those pieces coming together so quickly, just amazing, and all focusing on student safety. You know, when, when parents open that door and send us their, their best, it, it's our obligation to do everything we can to keep them safe while they're on the way to school, at school, and then on the way home again. And I just want to say, on behalf of the, the district leadership team, thank you for your drive, your initiative, your passion, and, and the pursuit of continuous improvement, because it's, it's evident in what your team has accomplished.
Thank you. That means a lot. Thank you, guys. Thank you, everybody. Thank you.
Next up, we have the return of kindergarten structured play, Dr. Lawson and Dr. Kutch.
Good evening, President Scrobot, Vice President Heller, esteemed members of the board, Superintendent Holer. We are here this evening to give you an update on our initiative around returning to structured play in our kindergarten classes. My role will be to just frame it for you in terms of historical context and then allow the true heroes to celebrate their accomplishments thus far this year. So we always make a connection to our district's district strategic plan. We actually are hitting three goals this evening. Goal one being high-impact instruction and student achievement. Certainly, you will hear how this initiative affects our culture, climate, and community in our schools. But perhaps most importantly, you're going to hear about teacher voice and how the voice of teachers changed what we're doing in the district. So you may remember this, if you've been in education for a while, but we've had a learned experience on or about 2014. There was a national shift that was going on across the country, and there was a prioritization for more academic learning time. Academic outcomes was around common core state standards coming into play. We had some societal expectations around full-day kindergarten. Half-day kindergarten sort of disappeared slowly across the country, and then a huge focus on standardized testing and the results from that testing. So we made a shift, and we took away the dramatic play area and the kitchen sets. And we took away the block corner, and we said that students needed to be spending more time in straight academics. Well, we learned that that wasn't the best approach. Research is actually suggesting that we take a more holistic approach. And in order to optimize child development, we really need to hit all of the developmental areas that are going on when children are five years old and foster more well-rounded learners. So the research suggested to combine play with the academics at the same time. And we had been doing that, and we made a decision as a district, because of the teachers you will hear from this evening, to return to structured play within the classrooms. It is widely recognized as best practice. You will hear why tonight. It promotes active engagement. Our children are developing problem-solving skills while playing. I know that's hard to believe, but it truly does happen. Most of all, though, I think what you will hear this evening is that it has reignited a love for learning, not only from our wonderful five-year-olds that you will see this evening, but from our fabulous educators that you will hear from. And so without further ado, I will turn all this research babble into action, and you will hear testimonials from our teachers. So as an introduction, Dr. Kutch is going to give you an overview. So as an introduction, Dr. Kutch is going to give you an overview. She oversees our director, she is our Director of Curriculum Instruction. And then Tara Nardone serves as our lead kindergarten club teacher and has been instrumental in this, um, work. Marilyn Sims is a fabulous kindergarten teacher at Mount Pleasant Elementary. And then Tracy Tirochi will close us out. She is a first grade teacher and will give perspective from first grade teachers around this initiative.
Thanks, Lisa. So before the return of learning through play, and as Lisa set the stage of what the focus was, uh, back when with the standards based movement, the teacher you can see is a, you know, an allegory here with the teacher in the train, leading the train pulling the students. Their learning is passive. It's teacher led. The students are following along as you can see in the picture of the train. Since returning to structured play, and we're so excited to see more in action tonight, you see the teacher behind the students. The teacher is their support as purposeful planning, facilitation. The students are taking more of the active lead and making of their own learning through exploration, through play, through the centers, high student engagement. It's hands-on, really focusing in on those foundational skills built around a specific context. Practice, self-direction and differentiation centers occur and we, um, in small group work and working together and social emotional learning. But enough of that, what we really want to share with you is what is actually going on in the classroom, not just in these animated pictures, but for real. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Tara.
Let me bring it down to kindergarten level here. Okay. I am such a kindergarten teacher at heart and this just brings so much joy. So if I get a little excited, I'm sorry, but this is, I'm, this year has been so amazing. So the first thing we started looking at is reading, how to change, what do we change to make it more developmentally appropriate? And what we did is we kicked off the year with, it's called ABC Bootcamp. What a great way to introduce children to the alphabet group, but 26 days of learning the alphabet through music, art and exploration. And then we built in, um, a new program of CKLA. CKLA brings phonemic awareness and phonetic awareness to the students through a hands-on whole group and play-based, small group activities. It gives students a chance to actively and socially engage together in purposeful ways to practice the skills that they're introduced. The biggest part of all of this is the interest and in-depth learning from all of the students. Teachers this year keep coming when we meet every month, uh, and saying the excitement in students during play, when they are confidently sounding out and reading a word, when they are reading a story to a friend, when they are recognizing a letter sound or letter name, or when they can't wait to help their friends learn these skills by problem solving together. Next slide. In writing, we've also updated the way students approach writing. We are now building more confident writers through two programs, Kid Writing and Handwriting Without Tears. These developmentally appropriate programs enable the students to be successful in handwriting and in writing in many ways. Through these changes, teachers are seeing a love for writing in their students. Students are writing letters to each other at the writing centers because we have writing centers and children can make those choices to go to where they want. They can take down orders in dramatic play, make signs for their block creations, play games with sight words or CVC words, and of course, write amazing stories in their journals, which is what you can see in the pictures. I love this, uh, the two pictures right next to each other. It's from the same student. At the very beginning of the year, it said, I made a rainbow monster. But in the second one, which is a little harder to see because it's in pencil, but the change in the writing and the change in their sentence structure, just because of the interest, it says, I see a skeleton. It is spooky with an exclamation point. I'm sorry. So, and in the third picture, you can see just the excitement that a student has to share the work that they are doing in the classroom. Next slide. All right. We didn't only make changes in reading, we're taking changes all over. So in math, we, uh, the biggest changes in math include using hands-on activities and games within centers and play to learn the new concepts and practice skills while reducing computer time. We are seeing kids developing problem solving skills, deeper understanding of mathematical concepts, because they're interacting with manipulatives and each other. Teachers are able to now guide the students, meeting them at their level to support them in the most, more differentiated ways through center-based learning. We can go to, and social emotional is also an area that we're seeing great, wonderful, amazing improvement in. The changes this year in social emotional learning started with the inclusion of structured play. Though play, um, through play, teachers are seeing and able to guide students as they interact authentically, work through social problems and learn to care for each other to develop an, um, a positive community. This year, we also included dedicated time during each day to focus on social emotional skills. During that time, teachers are able to give concrete examples to support students in understanding their emotions, how to work with each other and work through social problems and how to negotiate their environment. As the years progressed, all the teachers are seeing students learning to communicate their feelings when interacting with peers in a healthy way, creating such a positive environment. Next slide. So as I was gathering all this information from the kindergarten teachers throughout the district, these were two quotes that spoke to how we all feel about the changes. So I'm just going to leave this up here to give you a minute to read them.
As a first grade teacher, I look forward to seeing how the return of structured play will impact next year's first graders. These are some of the benefits that we expect to see. Increased communication, we increase confidence with communication skills. Students will be able to better express themselves effectively during morning meeting and have reciprocal conversations with their peers. They'll be able to talk through problems and negotiate rather than relying on the teacher for assistance. Improved coping abilities. Students will be able to regulate their emotions when things don't go their way. They will be able to persevere when trying to find solutions in math and not give up when feeling frustrated. They'll be more willing to try new things without fear of making a mistake. Students will be more willing to take chances because they will be well, well equipped to communicate their needs and wants to others. Improved executive functioning skills. These are important mental capacities such as problem solving, following directions, working memory, focus and attention, which are some of the main indicators of future success, academic success, and play naturally develops them. Curiosity and motivation to learn. Play allows students to develop their imagination and interests, which will lead to an increased desire to wonder about their world. I just wanted to take a quick moment to put my parent hat on. Um, as a mom of a kindergartner, I'm thrilled that the district has made this important shift to structured play. My daughter is excited to come to school every single day and every night she comes home and talks incessantly about all the learning opportunities that she's had. So thank you, I really appreciate it. Right now you'll get to see why my daughter is so excited to come to school each day. This video shows structured play, what structured play looks like in some of our kindergarten classrooms.
Has been an exciting year in the Brandywine School District for many reasons. One of which is bringing structured play or guided play back to kindergarten classrooms. Last summer, I had the opportunity to be in a professional learning with several kindergarten teachers from the district. The ability to sit down with them, to talk with them, to listen to them and hear them call out the research around play, structured play, free play, guided play. We knew we had to do something.
District heard us and we were thrilled. I love the fact that Lisa Lawson is so early childhood. We had the support of Link Hohler and Michelle. And I was thrilled to know that they were on board and they wanted to move ahead and say, okay, let's write this curriculum, let's make it work.
It was great to all work together in the summer because in kindergarten, we are diehard kindergarten teachers and we're crazy. But we know what the students need and, um, and we were able to put together some pretty cool, um, structures of our curriculum.
What's my letter? So one of the things that we do is we start our morning with play. That way kids can come in and they can sort of warm up to school. As we move forward in the year and we have our literacy block and we have our math block, what we're going to do is start to introduce centers. At first the centers will be very play-based and they'll be very hands-on and they'll, they'll remain play-based and hands-on, but they'll get a little more structured as the year goes on, so that by the time the kids are ready to go into first grade, they'll have a little more experience with structure and be a little more ready for some higher level skills and some higher level academics.
Structure play is meaningful play. It has a purpose, there are objectives and there are learning goals that are attached to it. The children get the opportunity to do hands-on learning. They get a chance to explore and I can relate it to all the different areas of the curriculum, math, science, writing, social studies, reading, language arts.
Before we started bringing structured play back, you didn't see the kids connecting with one another as quickly as they're doing now. It didn't inform that family that you want to make when you're trying to get your kids to get to know each other. And when your kids don't have that connection, it's harder to get them to follow those rules in the classroom or understand what those even mean and how they affect one another.
So many kids have gone on and they're sort of lacking that, making connections with other people, like learning those interpersonal skills that they need to, to be ready to be students. And I think what we've realized is that that play is a key, it, it's a key component for kids' overall success, the success of what is the whole child.
Good. What do you hear first? Teaching inclusion for so long, I've seen the need for differentiation in our stations and in our centers. Every student, every classroom, every school is different. And the incorporation of structured play has allowed every student in our district to feel like they belong. Play has just kind of brought everybody together.
With the return of structured play, it's given teachers autonomy to add things into the classroom that we see that each student needs. The one thing about students, every year is a different year. Every group of children that come in has a different need and it gives us that opportunity to tailor it to what they need and mold it to how we can grow that specific child individually.
I love the fact that every child can grow from this program rather than just giving them a paper or a pencil. And by providing structured play, I think I'm giving the gift of learning and learning is fun in my classroom.
How many blocks?
Two.
Almost two.
We pride ourselves on affording the opportunity for teacher voice. They are on the front lines. They are on the ground with this work. Who better than them to plan the learning for our youngest students?
Having Dr. Lawson and Michelle Kutch and everybody that's been involved in this entire programming of restructuring kindergarten, it's just been, it has been empowering. They're listening.
Sure. I'm going to get, as a parent and as someone who is, um, you know, serving our district in the state senate, I think this is great for policy. It's great for parents, it's great for kids. Um, and teachers have really shown us the light here. And I think this is an amazing, uh, change and something that Brandywine should be incredibly proud of.
Would just like to recognize that Deb Miller, the nationally board certified teacher, which Tara is as well, um, joined us. Thank you, Deb. Any questions from the board?
Questions, no, thank you. Oh, go ahead.
First, I, uh, both of my kids had Mrs. Miller, it was great to see her highlighted in there. And if, if people don't think that this district has the best teachers in the world, you could go spend three minutes in her classroom and you would instantly know how amazing, uh, our teachers are. And then secondly, I know this was a very different place in time when, when this initiative went into effect, but I really hope it's the lesson that before we react to any trends or anything, that we really pause and consider all the impacts of that change. And just like you said at the end, and ask the teachers what their thoughts are and what their biggest fears are with any change that we make. So, um, thank you to all of you for not being silent and fighting for the kids. And this was amazing to watch. And by the way, that one student clearly has much better handwriting than I do. And anybody who knows me knows that isn't a joke. That was very impressive.
It's hard to not give me credit to, to give credit to former board member Karen Gordon, who was always and continues to be a voice for teachers. So, uh, we had many conversations about this.
And just to add on that, you know, it was good to see the, the teacher voice in the development and the implementation. And, you know, it'd be interesting to see you back here next year and talking about the, this cohort of students and how they, you know, moved into first grade and the improvements that it's made on their, you know, learning. So thank you.
I like the, I'm sorry, I know I said I, no comments, but I would like to add something. As a parent, um, it really, it really blessed my heart to see how, um, you really have an understanding of the lasting impact that what you do in kindergarten has on the child's entire school experience. Because sometimes we think that kindergarten is just about learning ABCs and one, two, threes, but how you talked about inclusion and you talked about building their capacity for social skills and negotiations. And I just thought about how my son, who's on the autism spectrum, his experience in his four-year-old class really did define his confidence for those following years. So I'm really, really glad to see it. And I hope that for everyone, that this video will help us take our kindergarten teachers more serious, where it's more than just finger painting, it's more than just ABCs and one, two, threes. It really is establishing the firm foundation for their entire school experience. So thank you.
Yeah. What, what's the old saying? Everything I needed to know, I learned in.
Kindergarten, yes.
Uh, I, I would just like to acknowledge the professionalism, right? And that started in the classroom with the teachers. The, the teacher's willingness to say, hey, I, I think we should be approaching this from a different perspective. The, the courage to come and have that conversation with the people at district office and the professionalism of the people at district office for, uh, validating the, the expertise that we do have in the classroom and, uh, working together. The number of times this summer, when I walked into the conference, uh, room at district office and saw 25 people sitting there and I'm thinking, what the heck are you doing? Oh, we're, we're still working on the kindergarten curriculum. And this was teachers coming together, putting together high quality instructional materials and plans and curriculum. That's what it's about. And, uh, this is just the beginning. I, I know, uh, Dr. Kutch and, and Dr. Lawson have already started similar discussions with our teachers in, uh, third to fifth. And, uh, the plan is to keep progressing up through the grade levels. Again, uh, how important it is that we, we listen to our, and I'll say, master teachers. Because as Mr. Heller pointed out, uh, that, that's what we have and, and that voice is critically important. So thank, thank you to all of you.
That will lead us into our superintendent's report. Mr. Hohler.
Well, I think I'm, I'm going to say that I've been showed up tonight in terms of my report. It's a great report, but I'm not sure that it, it matches the, the previous report or the technology or the transportation report, or even the report of our amazing high school students. So, uh, here we go. President Skorobat, Vice President Heller, members of the board and audience members. Happy New Year. Despite the fact, there's only been a few weeks of school since the last board meeting due to winter break, there's never a shortage of great things to report from our students.
report from our students, schools, and district. January is recognized as School Board Appreciation Month. I want to take a moment to express my heartfelt gratitude and appreciation to the board for your unwavering dedication and tireless commitment to our students, our schools, and our community. Your role as a member of the board is often a challenging and demanding one, requiring countless hours of hard work and thoughtful decision-making. Your vision and leadership have helped shape the direction of our school district, ensuring that we continue to provide the highest quality education and support for our students. During this School Board Appreciation Month, I want to acknowledge the sacrifices that you make and the dedication that you show, not only in your official roles, but also in your genuine care for the well-being and success of every student in our district. On behalf of the entire school district, our staff, and most importantly, our students, I extend my heartfelt thanks for your outstanding service. Mount Pleasant Elementary and Principal Matt Auerbach, Philadelphia Eagles Fan of the Year, were featured on Fox Eagles versus Giants pre-game show on Christmas Day. Each week, whenever there's an Eagles game coming up, Mr. Auerbach and students chant for the Philadelphia Eagles during the morning announcements to show their school spirit and support for their beloved Eagles. The NFL on Fox heard of this MPE tradition and contacted Mr. Auerbach. Producers and cameramen from NFL on Fox visited Mount Pleasant Elementary to film students reciting the Eagles chant and followed up with a story about Mr. Auerbach as the 2022 Eagles Fan of the Year. Millions across the country watched and learned about Mr. Auerbach's dedication to his family, his students, school, and of course, the Philadelphia Eagles. Well, as a diehard Cowboys fan sitting in this chair, I was a tough one to read, but go Eagles. Huge news. Mount Pleasant High School senior Reed Erickson has been nominated to the U.S. Naval Academy in Annapolis, Maryland by both Delaware U.S. Senators Carper and Coons. Each year, members of the U.S. Congress nominate top candidates from their home state for admissions to the nation's leading service academies. This prestigious achievement is a testament to Reed's hard work, dedication, and commitment to serving our country. What a fantastic honor.
Mr. Holer, I don't know if you know this, but that's my nephew.
Oh, congratulations. Two BSD students have been named Delaware Online's Athletes of the Week in December and January. Brandywine High School's Jackson Bloomley took the honor of the week on December 11th at Concord High School's Maya Philbin the week of January 1st. This extraordinary achievement highlights the talent and dedication of our student athletes. Their performances have not only brought them individual recognition, but also shown a spotlight on the quality of our school district's athletic programs. This recognition is a testament to their hard work, sportsmanship, and the support they receive from our coaches and the school community. We're proud of them and look forward to their future accomplishments. The Governor's Institute for School Leadership, GIZL, is a partnership between the Delaware Department of Education and the University of Delaware. Being accepted through the, by invitation-only process, to one of the GIZL programs of study is truly an honor. Wanted to take a minute to share with you our recent graduates of the GIZL program and share this year's selected participants along with our BSD Administrative Leadership Team. Graduating this year from the GIZL Executive Leadership Academy, our Human Resources Director, Ms. Delithia McIntyre, and our Director of Community Engagement and Partnerships, Ms. Lavina Jones-Davis. Congratulations. Graduating from the Assistant Principal Academy, Ms. Jackie Chesworth, who's Assistant Principal at Maple Lane, Ms. Monique Johnson of Harlan Elementary, and Dr. Erin Smith, Proud Principal of Claymont Elementary. And four additional, or sorry, three additional administrators have been nominated and selected to attend the Executive Leadership Academy for this coming year. That is Ms. Kiri Caldon-Lacy, who is Principal at Mount Pleasant High, Ms. Tammy Grimes-Stewart, who is our Director of Elementary Education, and Dr. Sterling Siemens, Proud Principal of Springer Middle School. Congratulations to our BSD administrators for seeking continuous growth and improvement. You make us proud to be BSD. Already mentioned by one of the high schools, our three high schools will be offering free application for federal student aid, or FAFSA, events for students and families. These events aim to help students and families navigate the complexities of the financial aid application process for higher education. Our school counselors continue their hard work, ensuring that all students have access to the resources and guidance needed to apply for federal student aid. The meetings will be held on January 11th at Mount Pleasant High School, January 16th and 17th at Brandywine High School. And we are still waiting to confirm the Concord High School date, most likely mid-Fentuary. And we'll get those posted on the district calendar on the district website. Good news, the mid-January drought we were all fearing is not going to happen this year. The forecast warning that we received from the state today about another massive rain event coming Tuesday evening through Wednesday. Thankfully, this appears to be just rainfall, but it's a good reminder that a few degrees colder and we'd have a ton of snow on our hands. With that said, it's a good time to review our process for notifying parents of weather-related delays or closures. Every winter storm presents a different set of challenges. We take into account various factors such as snowfall, road conditions, low temperatures, visibility when determining whether to implement a late start, early dismissal, or building closure. Every decision is based on a consideration of firsthand observations, weather forecasts, and safety and education priorities. Please notify your students, school of any changes to your work, home, or cell phone numbers, or email addresses, so that your family is aware of any important notifications. We'll use our regroup communication system to alert parents of any changes to regularly scheduled school events. All users in our system will receive automatic calls and emails again in the event of a weather-related announcement is needed. Updates will always be posted on the district website and social media channels such as Facebook, Instagram, and Twitter. These platforms provide a quick and accurate, accessible way for parents to stay informed. With that, Mr. President, that's my report for this month. And as always, many reasons tonight to be proud to be BSD.
Thank you very much, Mr. Holer. Any comments or questions from the board? Hearing none. Next up is our public comment segment. We ask that our speakers and audience members be courteous and respectful to each other. As always, this is your time to be heard regarding topics related to the Brandywine School District. Each speaker gets two minutes. And then we will move on to the next speaker. It's my understanding we have a group of speakers all from the same organization. So I want to be fair and consistent with prior practices. We don't typically let, and you guys want to speak together, correct? Okay. All right. So my question was, the way it was presented, I thought you wanted to like stack your time and have one speaker. So I'll just give everybody their two minutes and we're good? Okay, great. First up, any particular order?
All right. Thank you for your time, everyone. My name is Shayna Starks, Regional Manager with Pass Educators. I call us the firefighters when teachers need to call off sick, the substitute teachers. I am also a former student of Dr. Yolanda McKinney, Concord High School. So I would like you, I would like to thank Brandywine School District for partnering with us. We do have 34 daily substitute teachers throughout the district. And if there are any other needs scholastically, we are here to help. I would also like to thank Mr. Small at PS Middle School for being an amazing principal with, it's a high priority school. And that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Starks. And if you could just announce your name when you get up there, since I didn't write down the order that you could mention.
Good evening, BSD. I am Bianca Page. I am the active CEO of Pass Educators. First, I want to say thank you, thank you, thank you for allowing us to sit through this meeting. It was absolutely wonderful, you know, just listening to all the stories of the great work that you guys are doing in this district, watching the kids stand up here and speak so eloquently. It was wonderful, absolutely positively wonderful. The teachers, I was a teacher as well at a very, very high-end school, Eastside Charter School. And when I came into education, I said, oh my gosh, these babies, they need to play. So I absolutely love what you guys are doing. Great work. So really just a quick, you know, just, I think I have about 30 more seconds. The state of Delaware actually implemented a new background check process, which is absolutely positively wonderful. Some of the pros, you know, were getting background checks, you know, as early as the same day when people, you know, go down to, you know, Dover, all the different locations now. I believe that are between two to three locations before. There's now nine through the state of Delaware. So it's absolutely wonderful. Some cons, you know, we service about four districts throughout the state of Delaware. And now you have to get a background check for every district that, you know, that you work in. So, or as you were spending $65 to be able to float throughout the state of Delaware and say, hey, I can work in a school with kids. Now it's $85 per district. And it's kind of like a 550% increase. So it's pretty tough, you know, making sure that people have everything that they need to go into a district. But the same copy applies to every district. It's going to say the same thing. So, you know, really just, you know, some comments and concerns, like I said, BSD, you guys are doing a great job.
Thank you, Ms. Page.
My name is Ronell Page, founder of Pass Educators. Great job, Ms. Page, your team. BSD, so proud of you. I am a Concord High School grad, 2003. Mr. Bill O'Hanlon was a fellow classmate of mine. Ms. McKinney was in the building. You know, I just want to speak on this, the need for the referendum. You guys sold me. I'm ready to pay double taxes starting next month. I came, I came to BSD in 1998. I was actually sent to an alternative school program, an ILC at Springer Middle School, where I was mentored by Sean Smiley, Ron Handy, and Mr. Brown at the time. They allowed me to flow up to a regular education status and participate in sports, wrestling, track, and basketball for the first time ever. I was scheduled to go to Mount Pleasant High School and we were supposed to walk from Mount Pleasant down by 7-Eleven all the way to Mount Pleasant High School. And I wasn't going to do that. So I went to Concord High School where they had a school bus. And thank God for Mr. Harvey, Harvey and Mr. Holliday who wrapped their hands around me. And I wasn't supposed to be there, but I was a McKinney-Vento student, fresh coming out of foster care. And I mean, literally Harvey told me to get involved with education early on. He said, a black man in education with a level head can write his own ticket anywhere he goes. And as of right now, our organization has about 300 people that work a day within Delaware, 100 schools. And we're totally sold out of helping Brandywine School District pass the referendum. If there's anything we can do, knock on doors, send some text messages, send some letters. I mean, I want to do it. I mean, on the business side, if you guys get the money, I get the money. You know, so like I said, whatever we had to do, you just push past, we're ready to go. Our team is here. And we're dedicated to showing up to literally board meetings throughout the county for the rest of the year. We need to know what you guys are about, what you guys are doing, and just play our part. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Page. Appreciate your comments, given the state of, you know, teacher shortages throughout. You provide invaluable service and that you're a product of the Brandywine School District is fantastic. So thank you.
I do have a question for Mr. Holer regarding something that was stated about the background checks. What can we, is, like, what can we do? When did this start? Who do we talk, need to talk to? Because that, I, you know, we all know that there's a teacher shortage. And if we are going to put roadblocks in front of our potential substitutes, it provides an unsafe environment in our schools.
Certainly agree. And this has been a topic of conversation for several months. Our Director of HR, Delithia McIntyre, has led the charge. She is one of the leads in the state for human resource directors, has raised this with that group. We have met with other individuals around this same issue as recently as the week before winter break with a DOE, like almost like an attorney that is looking into things to help us because we agree. Why can't we share background checks? $85 times four for people who we desperately need. So we, Brandywine is actively pursuing some tweaks, right? The intent of the background check, absolutely admirable. But the logistics, some of the logistical pieces, we think could be worked in a different way to make it easier, less expensive, and still maintain the integrity of the safety and security.
Thank you.
And that concludes public comment. Next up, board member liaison reports and other reports. Mr. Ackerman, DSVA?
DSVA was supposed to meet last Wednesday, but the meeting was postponed until this coming Wednesday, so I have no report tonight.
Thank you very much. District Finance Committee has not met since last meeting. They're scheduled to meet this Wednesday, the 10th. Ms. Stock, Parent and Citizen Advisory Committee?
We have not met since the last board meeting. However, we do have our next meeting at the end of this month, which is January 25th at Mount Pleasant Multipurpose Room. But we do have a couple of smaller subcommittee meetings with our three co-chairs throughout this month.
Fantastic. Reverend Dickinson, does anyone have a Wilmington Learning Collaborative Report on her behalf, Ms. Dickinsons? Any additional reports that are not on the agenda?
I have one from Parent Council.
Okay. Parent Council?
Yeah, Parent Council for Students with Disabilities. We did not meet since the last board meeting. However, tomorrow, January 9th, there is a presentation for families on Augmented and Alternative Communication and Literacy. Families are encouraged to attend a joint presentation from the Parent Council and BSD staff. It is from 6:15 to 8 o'clock, and it is via Zoom. There are, please consider signing up for staff, students, and families for the Special Olympics of Delaware. Also, I think I challenged board members to plunge. The Cool School Challenge, which is under the Brandywine School District, BSD is currently on the charts as number three in the state for schools competing for the polar bear plunge. And the amount of money they raised and number six for the number of bears that are plunging. So if you can plunge in person, or you can pledge in person or virtually on Sunday, February 4th. And the information for this is on the Um, and the information for this is on the Brandywine School District website under Special Education and on Facebook under BSD Special, uh, Parent Council for Students with Special Needs. Um, and the next meeting is February fifth at six fifteen virtually and also being held at Mount Pleasant Elementary School in the multipurpose room.
Thank you very much, Ms. Pigeon. Any additional member reports? Here are none. I will move on. Uh, this time I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda for this evening.
So moved.
Motion, Ms. Pigeon, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Heller. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve the monthly personnel report as discussed in executive session?
So moved.
Second.
Uh, first motion, Ms. Jeggedy, Dr. Jeggedy, second, uh, Mr. Heller. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, do I have a motion to approve student matters, uh, as discussed in executive session?
So moved.
Motion, Mr. Ackerman, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Stock. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, old business, uh, Superintendent's Referendum Update. Mr. Holder?
Don't know if I can top some of the testimonials by our students earlier, uh, but want to give the, the board and the community, uh, an update around some particulars in, uh, the referendum request coming up February thirteenth. So, uh, there's been lots of questions around just what a referendum is, why do we have to have referendums? Uh, are referendums unique to Delaware? Dr. O'Handlon, our PIO, uh, worked with a, a Concord grad named Andy Berger. Um, he owns his own company, Andrew Berger Productions. And, uh, we took him up on an offer to create a, a little animated video to help explain why we're going to referendum, what's needed, um, and answer some of those lingering questions around the referendum. So, uh, let's take a look and we're going to be sending this out to all of our parents, posting it on our website and using it in our presentations that are upcoming to, uh, community members and civic groups.
On February thirteenth, twenty twenty-four, the Brandywine School District will be asking voters in our community to support an operating referendum. This referendum is absolutely critical to continuing to meet the needs of our students and it is important to be aware of what is at stake. If the referendum fails to pass, we face six point five million dollars in cuts across our district, which will impact every aspect of the school day and the educational experience of over ten thousand four hundred students. From class sizes to instructional materials, staff and programs, to athletics, clubs, activities and more. In the state of Delaware, school districts are required by law to get voters approval to increase property taxes, known as a referendum. Brandywine last held a referendum in twenty sixteen with the commitment it would last for three years. Property assessments have not been updated since nineteen eighty-three, so local district funding has not increased since the last referendum in twenty sixteen. It is hard to balance budgets for that long without additional funding, but through strong fiscal stewardship, federal assistance during COVID and sixteen point eight million dollars in grant writing, the Brandywine School District has been able to stretch the last referendum for an impressive eight years. Brandywine School District has a longstanding district finance committee made up of community representatives along with members of the school board who monitor and provide oversight of district finances. In early September, this committee unanimously determined a referendum of forty-five cents is needed in order to continue supporting our sixteen schools. The school board agreed and voted unanimously to proceed with bringing the request to voters. In order to minimize the impact on Brandywine taxpayers, the request is to phase in this increase over two years with twenty-five cents July first, twenty twenty-four and twenty cents July first, twenty twenty-five. Based on the average assessed property value in the Brandywine School District, the increases would also phase in for fifteen dollars, fifteen cents a month in the first year and twelve dollars, twelve cents a month in the second year. Property reassessment is currently underway in Newcastle County for the first time in forty years. While reassessment will update assessed values closer to market value. When completed in twenty twenty-six, reassessment will not increase tax collections for the Brandywine School District because the district is required by law to reduce the tax rate to remain revenue neutral. Even though local district funding has not increased since twenty sixteen, inflation and the cost to maintain our essential programs, staff and instructional support has increased considerably. This funding request focuses on maintaining critical programs and services for students and classrooms. Successfully passing on February thirteenth will allow the Brandywine School District to continue attracting and retaining high-quality educators, maintain the safety and security of our sixteen campuses, repair and replace student computers and interactive classroom technology, continue the upkeep of our sixteen buildings and grounds, covering two point two million square feet and four hundred acres across the district, and continue the outstanding instructional and extracurricular programming offered throughout the Brandywine School District. Thank you for taking the time to understand why this upcoming vote is so important for our students and schools. We hope you will join us in supporting the Brandywine School District referendum on February thirteenth.
Love, uh, the video. Um, it's short, it's to the point, uh, covers a lot of the questions that exist out there. There's still, uh, a tremendous amount of confusion around the reassessment. That video talked about how it is to be revenue neutral for the districts. Districts will not get a windfall of money. So if you look at the slide that's in front of us now, right now, pre-assessment, different sized houses, different, uh, structures of houses, different locations, they're all different, but they're all common. In fact, that they're assessed using nineteen eighty-three assessment values. Those values times our current tax rate equals our local dollars. Post reassessment, the same houses will be assessed at a different value. So that value will get bigger. In order to remain tax revenue neutral, does that next slide have that drop down? Nope, no backup. So there's an animation that's missing. That local revenue amount in the first part of that slide should actually drop down and remains exactly the same size. So if the assessed values are greater, how do you end up with a, a, a local revenue that's exactly the same? The district has to adjust and shrink that tax rate so that the local revenue remains the same post reassessment as it was before reassessment. So, uh, there's a lot of confusion out there about this. We hear on social media that my taxes are going up, I'm going to pay four times as much taxes, the district's going to be rolling in the, no, the district's not going to be a beneficiary of increased revenue as a result of the reassessment process. Communication efforts, where do we stand? We've hit a, all of our staff had a faculty meeting, done presentations, we're in the throes of presenting to every school's PTO, PTA. We've scheduled three town halls. You'll see those dates on our district website. We've scheduled quite a few meetings with civic associations, uh, other groups out in the community. We have a plethora of information on our district website. We're going to upload that video as soon as possible. So that is on that website. We're going to send that video out as a separate link in our, uh, board recap that we send to all parents and staff members. And we encourage you to send that video link out to friends, neighbors, anybody who has questions about the referendum. Have them watch that video and then direct them to our website. And if they still have further questions, please reach out to us. There's an email, uh, that you can type out a, uh, a question. We'll respond to that or give us a call to district office. We're happy to take phone calls. We still, the two check marks, uh, below, by code, Delaware code, we're required to publish in the news journal or other publication uh, notice to the community at large, uh, that we are planning the referendum. Uh, we are going to follow those code regulations. I think we've got to have our first article out, uh, by the end of this week or over the weekend. And, uh, again, we need your assistance in getting this word out to the community. So what's at stake? We put together a series of slides to use in, uh, our community presentations that kind of showed what we have accomplished in the last three or four years as a district. And I, I see no more fitting way to say what's at stake than to review just some of those slides. So things that are at stake because of that six point five million dollar deficit, some of the amazing after-school programs that we offer our elementary students. This weekend I had the, the, the opportunity to attend the EBL, Elementary Basketball League Competition at, at Concord and I was amazed. The entire front car, uh, parking lot at Concord was full, couldn't find a spot to park. Had to go around back and probably a good quarter of the back parking lot was full. The, you had as many spectators in the gym as you would during a high school basketball game. Uh, two teams, uh, but four teams, two girls, two boys from the, two different schools, cheerleaders. Just a wonderful, wonderful opportunity when you talk about connections to school, the value of climate and culture. Uh, just a, an amazing, amazing event, but it's things like that that are at risk. Next slide. Last month, we, we celebrated the conference championships from, from three of our teams. Tonight, we celebrated all, uh, athlete of the week. Uh, Brandywine is feeling a comeback in terms of its, uh, standing as, uh, an athletic force to be reckoned with. And, uh, if you remember previously when, uh, the last referendum did not pass and we had to make a list of things to cut, while we have not gone through that exercise yet, I will tell you that previously, middle school sports didn't exist. They'll be on the chopping block. And last time we had to take a serious look, I, I believe freshman sports were axed. Uh, JV sports and we, uh, only had varsity sports. Uh, cheerleaders weren't traveling to away games, band weren't traveling to away games. Uh, and I just spoke to a parent, um, who shared with me that when the referendum failed back in the nineties, she was in tenth grade at Mount Pleasant High School and did not get to play basketball her sophomore year of high school. And to this day, it is still a sore point in her memories of high school, the opportunity she missed. We have a tremendous momentum going forward right now in this district. And, uh, the last thing we want to do is take that forward progress and have it go backwards. So these wonderful opportunities also stand at risk. Next slide. We're talking about the value of safety and security. In twenty sixteen, we shared four school resource officers amongst our six secondary schools. Today, you can see we have six school resource officers, one at every one of our secondary schools and three constables. That constables program was started as a result of the referendum. Our hope is to continue to grow that constables program. We have nine elementary schools. Three constables travel a non-routine schedule and serve those nine schools. We would love to see that three constables become six constables and those six constables become nine constables. Where we have a full-time individual at every one of our buildings. That's part of our hoped plan. The other things you see at the bottom of the screen are all systems and softwares that we utilize as part of our safety and security initiatives in this district. They come at a cost. Uh, they too will face elimination, um, should this referendum not pass. Not all of them, which ones, I don't know. Uh, that would all have to be determined, but we would definitely be taking a major step in the wrong direction around state, safety and security in this district, should we not pass this referendum. Next slide. Last month, I think we showed videos of our amazing pathways that, uh, have taken years for us to create, uh, refine, get approved. And, uh, they too stand at risk of being reduced and or eliminated. Next slide, please. We had a national champion last year, not just national champion for the Samsung competition and uh, and almost two million students have participated in the Samsung uh, Solve for Tomorrow competition since its inception in twenty fifteen. These are the best and brightest minds across the high schools of this nation. We compete against schools in the Silicon Valley around this initiative. We won the Samsung Solve for Tomorrow competition last year. As great as that accomplishment was, I think as important, if not even more important, Brandywine took the Samsung Employees Choice Award. That's where the staff of the leadership teams of Samsung looked at all the projects, all the, the teams and picked the one that they believed was the most impressive, innovative and, um, promising. And for Brandywine to walk away with that amazing, our STEM programming is second to none. But it stands at risk without this referendum. Next slide, please. Dr. Pizana presented last month on, uh, our visual and performing arts, amazing statistics, amazing success. This district has always valued the arts. We've had the luxury of saying in, in previous meetings, the arts are alive and well in Brandywine. Truly, they are. Will the arts be as flourishing and as productive? Should the referendum not pass? There's an easy answer for that. Answer is no. Every facet of programming will be affected if the referendum doesn't pass. Next slide, please. Some amazing statistics there. Since twenty sixteen, two district, two district teachers became state teachers of the year. Brandywine has more state teachers of the year than any district in the state. Look at that number of teachers for state content of the year. That's since twenty sixteen. Seventy-five percent of our educators have a master's degree. There's a massive teacher shortage in the state. There are districts right now in the state with eighty, sixty, forty teacher openings that aren't filled. Brandywine has single digits at the secondary level, single digits at the elementary level. single digits at the elementary level. There's not enough graduates to fill the existing vacancies. More people will retire this year. More vacancies will open. We need to remain attractive so that those teachers are willing to come to Brandywine. What happens if we don't pass the referendum? We'll be cutting teachers. And once we have to cut those teachers, should another referendum next year, the following year pass, wooing those teachers back once they've gone to another district is going to be nearly impossible. In this shortage, we can't afford to lose the teachers that we have because we can't afford to pay salaries. It is critically, critically important. If we cut staff, class sizes will go up. Programs will be reduced. After school activities will be hit. Next slide. And when all those things happen, the academic performance of our students will suffer. $45 million last year in scholarships offered to our graduating seniors. That's just last year. Look at those colleges and universities that some of our students went to. AP Honor Roll, award-winning STEM, award-winning arts and musics, sports, all stand at risk should this referendum fail. Next slide, please. We're going to post the following video on our district website too, that, that really does sum up when you, when you look at the faces and listen to the words of the individuals on the video, just what's at stake for this referendum.
Composed of 16 schools across 400 acres, the Brandywine School District supports over 10,400 students and employs more than 1,100 teachers and paraprofessionals. On February 13th, we are asking you to vote for an operating referendum that is necessary to maintain our critical programs and services and most importantly, to support our educators, the heartbeat of our district.
There is nothing quite like the magic that happens in the Brandywine School District. My experiences at Brandywine High School absolutely shaped the course of my life after high school and beyond. And I am honored to be able to come back and serve the school district that motivated me to become a teacher in the first place.
I work with a collection of people that believe in growing children. That's what I want to do. I want to be somebody that helps set a foundation for children to love learning. And being a kindergarten teacher, that's what my job is. It's to make sure that they come in and they learn how to be students.
You know, when you do something you love, it's not really a job. And that's how I feel here at the Brandywine School District.
We're not only helping them with their academic goals, but creating children in our society that are kind and compassionate and loving children. And so forming their conscience and, and caring for them in that way too is very important to me.
I'm proud to be BSD because this is a supportive environment for staff, for students, for parents. And I see it as a product of this school and this district. And I'm why proud of the kids here.
We hope you will come out to support the Brandywine School District, our programs, our services, our students, our educators.
Kudos to our very own Mick Austin, who took it upon herself to, to put that video together, narrate it. Outstanding job, Mick. Thank you. I'll, I'll end with this. Back in the seventies, there was a catchphrase and I, I don't remember what product it was for, but it, the, the phrase was let George do it. Other words, let somebody else take care of it. This is one time we can't let somebody else take care of it. We can't decide, well, it's, it's raining or it's too cold. It's not important enough for me to go out and vote. We heard a testimonial tonight from a parent who, who sees and understands the value of what's at stake. And we need your assistance in raising that sense of urgency. Help, helping people understand exactly what's at stake. You heard it from the kids themselves tonight. Of all places to cut, this is not a place to cut. Our referendum request does not, we, we did not build a separate plan full of initiatives, new items. We have remaining pieces of our district success plan that we are in the throes of finishing. The request is to continue the excellent work that's underway at this time. We know we have growth to, to focus on. We, we know test scores are not where we want them. I would argue that no district has test scores exactly where they want them at this point. But we are focused on growth. We have seen that growth. We're seeing positive, positive initiatives across the board in our schools and in our district departments. Again, you, you heard about transportation tonight. We got a great glimpse of the performing arts and visual arts last month. And then you saw the amazing teachers with structured play this evening. We need to keep this momentum moving forward. So our, our plea tonight to anyone listening, for those following the board recap, help us get the word out, help us get people to the polls. Every vote matters. With that, that ends my report for this evening. If there's any questions from the board.
Oh, videos.
Yeah, I may, I hesitate to say anything after that because I really want everyone to, to dwell on, you know, Superintendent Holder's comments and the videos that you saw. Delaware is an archaic system. We don't want to be in this position any more than the taxpayers do. But it's, it's a necessary evil. And I think, you know, through our transparency that we've over this, since 2016, we're a better district than we were then. You know, going back to the last referendum, we indicated that we would, you know, make that money stretch three years. We stretched it beyond that. And then stretch it even beyond that with the help of the federal funding through COVID. But it is a serious time. We saw, you know, Hapequidemic did not pass their last referendum. You know, as a lifetime student, resident parent of Brandywine School District, I have a lot of passion for this district and I want to see it do well. And I believe in it. And that's why, you know, I've decided to run and serve on the board. But there's never a good time to go out for referendum and it's, it's important for those that experience the district firsthand. You know, we heard it from students today, the successes. They recognize the value that the district adds in the services and programs that we provide. And it's easy to think about the classrooms and the structured play, but this is an operational referendum. And we heard from transportation and people don't often think about, what does it take to move 7,000 students on a daily basis? What does it take to feed 10,000 students on a daily basis? So there's so much more that goes into it that we really need to make sure that we get out the vote, you know, show people what we've done, what we're doing, what we want to continue to do, to be what I think, you know, one of the premier districts in the state. And that's, you know, evident through US News and World Report, the top-ranked high schools, AP Honor Roll Distinction, our Dale Farmer Champions in Sportsmanship Awards, the superintendent mentioned the Samsung Champions, and so much more beyond that. We are a great school district. We're offering great things and opportunities for our students. Like every district, we have improvements to make. But we'd like your help to continue to do that. So please.
And Mr. Skrobo, when, when we, to sum it up, when, when you think that our revenue line for next year was established in 2016, hasn't changed. Hasn't changed in nearly a decade. You know, I, I mentioned to a group of parents the other night, when you went to the dollar store in 2016 and you bought an item, what did it cost you? A dollar. You go to the dollar store today and you buy an item, what does it cost you? If you're lucky, a dollar 25, most likely a dollar 50. We're working on a decade-old line item for revenue. It hasn't increased. You can't offer today's services on a decade-ago's budget. Just can't.
And I know we often talk about, you know, schools are community hubs. And they really are. I mean, from the activities that we offer, we're offering opportunities to kids that, you know, without these programs, they're going to be left to do other things. And we've continued to maintain our facilities and, you know, uplift the, the quality of life throughout our district, I think. And, you know, people throughout our, our district use our facilities on the weekends, in the evenings, the tracks, the fields, community groups. It all ties together. And like I said, it's an archaic system. We wish we, we didn't have to do it this way. But I think if you're looking for a return on your investment, it, it's a good bet when we've shown you what we can do and we're going to be, you know, good fiscal stewards of that money. Thank you. Next up, Ms. Florrie, monthly financial report.
Good evening, Mr. President, Mr. Vice President, members of the board and our whittled down audience here in person. I know I'm not as exciting as a kindergarten teacher and I'll just own that. Though we do put that same level of enthusiasm in the budget process as we do with structured play, I will say that. I have, it's a bit unconventional tonight because of the schedule with the board meeting being early because of the holiday next week. Our finance committee, as Mr. Skrobo said, won't meet until this Wednesday. So I'm presenting two reports tonight in advance of them reviewing it. In speaking of the referendum and our community presentations, it was very important, we believed, for transparency sake, to continue to have a financial report this month as well as the budget report this month because they normally occur here. And so to have it not occur or somehow be missing, we thought would not necessarily send the right message. So they are here tonight and I'm talking about, but the finance committee will review them on Wednesday. The first one is the December monthly report. And I will say it is on track. Revenues are 97.2% received for local funds. On the state side, 89.5% received. So total revenues for this point in the year, 92.2%, which is right on target with, with the preliminary budget and all of the estimates and forecasts going into the preliminary budget. On the expenditure side, we are at 50.84%. And again, for December, it's right on track in terms of 13 payrolls out of 26. And so exactly 50% and six months out of 12 of the fiscal year, which also matches 50%. So we're at 50.84%, slightly behind where we were last year. In fact, last year we were at 60%, so about 10% lower. But I think that is also in, in reference to the referendum efforts and understanding the spending cycle. And quite frankly, some of the potential cuts coming along of waiting until February to know exactly where we stand. But expenditure-wise, we are right on track. Similarly, for the federal funds, this is a different time of the fiscal year, but in that we get them starting in October. So we're at 33% rather than 50%. But again, those are on target. And the last remaining federal funds from ESER, this is been, this has been part of our conversations moving into not having the sufficient revenues to start the next year and why we're here talking about referendum for the, the last year really is on the ESER three funds. You can see we're now down to 4 million remaining funds total for the remainder of time for ESER. And a large one, the one you approved last month for the HVAC install, will take that down considerably as well as the last of summer school this summer for the extended time learning. So you can see that marching towards its end on September 30th. So all of this says that we are on track to meet those projections and budget estimates moving into January and the remainder of the fiscal year.
I have a question on page three of the revenue report. I don't understand other state revenue at 220%. And you might have explained it and I just didn't follow along.
I'm going to talk about that in the final budget presentation. And it's very good news in that we received, thanks to the excellent grant writing and competitive spirit of our staff here, a number of grants from the state. And so in this final budget, there's a recommendation to increase it based on that. And I have them highlighted. HR got a principal pipeline grant. We have several CTE grants and I can go through them now. Principal Pipeline, TSI, CSI, World Language. Dr. Lawson wrote a stronger connections grant. So there are a number of grants that we wrote to the state and were awarded.
Okay, that, thank you. Extra money is always good. I just didn't want to be extra money that we've got to.
No, it's a great question. It's a great question and it's a, it's addressed right in the final budget because you, you don't know what you're going to get. And so budgeting things that are unknown is a dangerous thing to do. And so in the preliminary budget back in the summer, we certainly hope for it, but we don't count on it. And so the, those things were not included in the budget at that time. And that's why there is that chance to adjust the final budget.
Thank you.
Had we gotten to the end?
We have.
Okay. So, oh no, we jumped back. So does anyone want to make a motion to accept the monthly financial report subject to audit with the right to revisit if the finance committee raises any objections?
So moves.
Motion, motion, Mr. Ackerman.
Second.
Second, Ms. Stock. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries.
Before we head into the next one, can I just make one quick comment? And I just want to thank Ms. Pigeon for that, that question because it does highlight what we've been talking about in terms of, of our being fiscally responsible and for the, the credit to our teachers and administrators and going out and seeking grant opportunities to save local funds. So thank you for pointing that out.
So there should be, there should be a PowerPoint. Otherwise, there's going to be a lot of charts and graphs. There's, there's not a PowerPoint. Okay, I'll stop. As they start to load it, I'll, I'll start talking. School districts in Delaware, along with the referendum process, were funded based on September 30th count, which is the primary basis of state funding. And that's based on how many students are in our district. We don't know that. So we do a preliminary budget in the summer to estimate that, but then have to come back. It's actually in state code, but come back for a final budget. And it takes into account, all right, what happened with enrollment? And there are a number of factors with enrollment. There's district enrollment, who's coming here? Who's choicing within our district? But then who's choosing to other districts as well as which students? As well as which students are attending charter schools? And so all of those numbers go into putting together the final budget because it impacts the revenue we receive from the state or revenue that we send to either charters or other districts via choice. And then, of course, like Ms. Pigeon asked, there are a number of things that can happen from the summer till now that can be incorporated into the final budget. That would be things like grants. That would be things that happen after the budget is passed. They're usually very limited. But then, of course, we have six months of experience to see, based on our positions and who filled the positions. There's more state revenue depending on a degree and years of experience, that kind of thing. So we can fit in who has been hired in those positions and what are the salaries costs associated with that. So it's all just finalizing based on that enrollment information. I put in here, one of the other things to adjust for is market performance. There are a lot of questions that I've gotten lately as we do kind of the referendum conversations about what investments do we have? Our money for the school district sits in the cash management board for the state of Delaware and the treasury. However, we have seen, and the finance committee has looked at this a lot, we've seen actually an increase in interest performance. I'm still on the first one, so it's perfect. So that's a factor as well that I was able to increase the interest estimates based on what we're receiving on the funds. And then, of course, the state and federal grants. Any changes in those are incorporated in the final budget. And this is not, I brought this water, it's not a long presentation because there aren't a lot of changes in the final budget, quite frankly. Our final student, it's the next one. Our final student enrollment is 10,350. That's a 17-student change from last year. But you can see there's changes in grade bands. There's 25 more students in pre-K, 29 more students in K through 5, 30 less students in middle school, and 41 less students in high school. The changes in charter and choice, we have a slight decrease. Fewer students left for charters, 13 students, to be exact. And on choice, we had a net decrease of 67 students from FY '23. Coming to Brandywine is the larger number, is down 50, which is 434. And moving to other districts is down by 17. So our final unit count, when those students, based on needs categories, are converted to units, even though we're down students, our unit count is up by 33 this year. And that is the most significant factor driving the changes in the budget. It's much smaller of a change than it was last year. Last year, I was going through my notes. It's almost like, you know, that year in review of yourself, but going through my notes in terms of what we presented last year because there was so much more change and so many more units. And the dollar impact was a much longer and more complicated budget presentation. This year, though, there is an increase of 33 units. And with that comes the expense on the local side, but the revenue on the state side. And importantly, as we talk for referendum presentations, that total increase over the last two years is over 100 units. And then you can see where it is changing. And this is not unique to Brandywine. This is a phenomenon across the state of Delaware where you're seeing pre-K, our units are up there. Really, no change on the K3, nine units down on the 4th through 12. But really, it's the increase in basic, intense, and complex where you see the most change on the needs-based categories. Last year, I had a bouncing ball, so this year I went to arrows. Because it is complicated to explain when you have to fund 33 additional new units. Each unit comes with state funding, but then the local funding associated with it also is needed. And that we're not going to change the estimate. The estimate for the final balance is still $6.1 million. So this is really, how do we accomplish that? And it's through a number, it's through two factors. With the increase in units, we're able to use the state funding. But this board, in approving the tax rate this year, the board decreased the overall tax rate to the county citizens or to the district citizens by 2 cents this year. But in that included a tuition adjustment for 2 cents, which went to fund positions that were increased under intense and complex in that needs-based category. So the local funding came from revenues and tuition that were already anticipated in the preliminary budget, as well as relief from that bottom part of the equation. We do have vacancies, as Mr. Holer said, we have single-digit vacancies. But every unit we utilize in whatever way we can. On the related services side, that is either positions that are hired by the district or contracted out. And so there's a flow between the two. If we don't hire, we cash them in and use the funds for the contractors through the various vendors for related services. However, on the Division I, if we have vacancies, we can also put those in the give-back if we're unable to fill them, but use those funds to support those additional positions on the top of the equation. And so that's why that arrow on the bottom goes up to fund the top. This kind of puts it into the words that go along with the arrows. The final budget is not a significant change. It's a 1.9% increase over the preliminary. And it's driven by four factors. $1.8 million of personnel costs for those additional units from the state. So that's state funding. There's another $1.1 million from the Wilmington Learning Collaborative. Dr. Burgos came and talked to us last month and talked about the initiatives and what they were putting in place. We've gotten the transfers, it's $1.1 million, all for the efforts. There are innovation grants, there are specific grants for the school and the collaborative. Similarly, will be received by the other districts as well. But our share of that is $1.1 million. So that's now in the budget that wasn't anticipated before. Those additional, to Mrs. Pigeon's question, those additional state grants, 332,000. And then the last one was an increase in the related services cash-in of 165. So similarly, with 1.9% increase on the revenue side, the expense side in the final budget also goes up by 1.8% for those same reasons, for the local salary expenses and those grant funds or grant programming. Really, to cut to the chase, there is no change and no improvement in the $6.1 million ending balance for June 30th. It hasn't changed, which means the shortfall remains. So in terms of the referendum projections, that is also unchanged. All of the financial modeling that this board has seen and worked through over the last year is right on track for needing, and again, that referendum remaining a critical funding priority. And then this is just the chart that shows where, on the revenue side, 3.5 million additional in state revenue. And then you can see on the expenditure side, the 1.8 million, that's divided, 1.8 million on the salary side for state. And then the Wilmington Learning Collaborative is 1.1. Really, all other operating budget changes is 144,000 or 0.4% of what we're talking about here. It's really those two changes for the additional units in the Wilmington Learning Collaborative that make up that $3.7 million change in the final budget. So in terms of next steps, like I said, tonight was the first read. The committee will have, the finance committee will have a chance to, we'll go over this in much greater detail, line by line, on Wednesday night. And then certainly hope to have a recommendation from them in our February meeting. But then the process moves to '25, that the governor's working on the finalizing. And we will see the governor's recommended budget by the end of January. The financial position report, which will project out, it won't be any different. It'll be that $6.1 million estimated ending balance. We'll continue the monthly finance committee meetings throughout the remainder of the year. And then legislative session kicks into gear. We'll also hear updates on the Wilmington Learning Collaborative work. Closeout ESER, there'll be another mid-year unit count. We do one in September, but then there's a mid-year one that offers the potential for adjustments. And then, of course, move into that next budget with continued DFAC and then the state budget finalized on June 30th. I anticipate coming for the '25 warrant in the June-July timeframe. I know that was a debate, which month we did it. So I'm shooting for June this year. And then, of course, we talked about not receiving RCNs and resubmitting for, and that due date is August of 2024 for next year. But really, the next one, I mean, all efforts, all eyes are on the referendum on February 13th. You can go to the next slide. Because that outcome, February 13th, that outcome, that number hasn't changed. If we don't pass $6.5 million in cuts, will need to happen. And we'll have to move into that mode versus, you know, certainly the hope of continuing the great things that we're doing here in the district.
May I ask a question? Reverend Dickinson isn't here, so she would be the person probably the best to answer this.